Will to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes of June 18th are approved. Next up are meeting minutes from June 25th. Any discussion? Do we have a motion? Move to approve? Motioned and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Meeting of June, meeting minutes of June 25th are approved. And finally, meeting minutes of July 16th. Any discussion?
That was a very short meeting.
Do we have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the meeting, say aye.
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 Meeting minutes approved unanimously. With that, we move on to the third item on the agenda for this evening, which is a further discussion of the accessory dwelling units in Kenmore. And for that discussion, we'll invite city staff, interns, and consultants to the presenter's table.
Good evening. Debbie Bent is not here tonight, so I am accompanied by two very able bodies here. Mike Stanger with Arch and Jordan Wolter, our intern who did such a good job presenting the background materials at the last meeting. So tonight, I have a little, very brief PowerPoint. I'm looking over so that... And this is just to give you some background information and a visual reference for our discussion this evening. Maybe. Bear with us, please. A little technical difficulties. Alright. That's okay. Thank you. Alright, so tonight, we're going to begin the policy discussion after you received all of the background materials. And on our agenda tonight, we have four topics. The first is to ask if you have any questions or wish more information on the background information. And in front of you, at your places tonight, was a packet of updated survey results. Jordan had called some additional folks, and we have a more significant number of responses now, so he's going to talk just real briefly about that as we go through here. The second thing on your agenda is to look at a few questions and have sort of a broad discussion about general goals and guidelines. And this is really the chance for you to, in a free-form format, talk about your goals for this project and how you think various aspects of it should be considered or weighed. The third thing we'll do is go through that list of policy questions. And we've tried to provide pros and cons. And the answers to those questions are what will guide us as we begin to prepare zoning code amendments. So we'll go through those. I'm not sure how long it will take. It may be that we are not going to finish it tonight and that we will continue that discussion on September 17th. Your first September meeting is going to be on the pros plan, again, the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. So we'll come back to you for your second meeting in September. And then the last thing is just to talk about some of the other actions that have been identified and see if you had any questions about that. So for the background information, this was the first part of tonight's memo. And again, we tried to respond to all of your questions from the last meeting and perhaps most significantly, Commissioner Vanderland had asked about the vision. So we went through the comprehensive plan and tried to pull out goals and policies that we thought related to the vision. The second piece of information, and this was an attachment to your packet but was summarized in the memo, is Kenmore's current ADU regulations. So these are the rules that are currently in place. The third thing was a comprehensive table of regulations from other communities. And we included both Portland, Santa Cruz, et cetera, that were discussed at your last background information meeting, but then also a lot of Puget Sound communities to bring it closer to home. The fourth thing was, were recommendations from Arch. These aren't officially from Arch. There's a staff working group that had come to consensus on some topics. That staff group work is ongoing. Mike is heading that up. And we'll be meeting into the fall and also pulling in, I think, some building official representatives to talk about how building plans and building tip sheets, this all could be synthesized into a complete package and we can share information. And then the last thing is the ADU owner survey. So the way I envisioned this first discussion was to ask if you all had any questions about the first four items, and then I'll turn to Jordan and he's just going to summarize, kind of update, changed information now that we have more survey results. So did you have any questions about the information at the beginning of the packet?
One question for clarification. And I just may be reading this wrong, but I see in two different places, when we're talking about the current regulation and whether or not owner occupancy is requirement? In the table, it looks like it is, or is not, rather, but in the other information, it seemed to appear that it is. Could you clarify that for me?
So I think we're okay. If Kenmore is the first line in Attachment 4, and over/under owner occupancy, there's a Y, so yes, it is in the table.
Okay, thank you. I was reading that wrong.
Okay, alright. And Kenmore's ADU regulations do require owner occupancy. In fact, if you apply to have an ADU, either to convert your house, part of your house, or to do a detached ADU before you can get your final building approval, you have to sign and file with the county an affidavit that says it will always be owner occupied, and that is recorded against the title of the property. So it would come up to anyone that you sold the property to, that the ADU is only to be occupied as long as the owner is living in one or the other of the units.
And by signing that affirmation, what's the legal relationship between the ADU owner and the city at that point? Is that just a covenant that is attached to the property rights?
It is.
Okay.
It's a covenant. And if the city, as with all of its regulations, only enforces on a complaint basis. So for example, if a neighbor were to complain and say the owner is not living in one of these units, and in fact, it's being two independent renters and the owner is, who don't know where the owner is, that would be a code enforcement issue, and the city's code enforcement officer would pursue that question.
Do you know, Debbie, if we've ever pursued that?
Yeah, we have. And I confirmed that with Development Services, that in fact, they did. They have pursued that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I meant Lori, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Other questions on the first four sections? So perfectly put together, we're completely satisfied, it seems.
Alright, well, now I'm going to turn it over to Jordan, and he's going to briefly describe the information that you have in front of you. This is different from the information in your packet, but he's just going to highlight some of the changed results now that we have more owner perspectives.
Yes, since the packet that you received, three additional people have completed the survey. And so we now have a total of eight ADU owners who completed their ADU since 2012, who have given us information on their opinions relating to ADU code, as well as to resources that the city of Kenmore could provide to prospective ADU builders in order to supplement and aid them in that process. And in my opinion, the most pertinent questions that were asked were question 18, which was, what additional resources would have helped you or a future ADU builder with the process? And for that question, seven people answered it and one skipped it. And the most selected response was, or the most requested additional resource was changes to the ADU regulations. And that was five of seven individuals who selected that response. And then the other responses for that question refer to options that the city council could potentially consider in attempting to incentivize the production of ADUs. And then question nine specifically asked, which regulations of Kenmore's ADU code would the respondents want to be revised to make it easier to build an ADU? And I think their most resounding response for that question was that eight out of eight individuals selected the removal, or at least the revision and liberalization of owner occupancy requirements. And I believe that that can partially be explained because that's the only requirement which continues to restrict ADU homeowners who currently have an ADU in terms of their use of the ADU, since they've already successfully constructed one. And then the other levels of selection for the different possible responses also can be used to contextualize which revisions the planning commission and by extension, the city council could consider the revision of. But it must be said that because the sample is constituted of only eight individuals, that it's not representative, so it should be used for the purpose of inference rather than of being considered to be totalistically representative of the population of ADU homeowners in Kenmore. Thank you.
A question. I did listen to the meeting, and I think at one point, you did quote how many ADUs were in Kenmore that were permitted since 2012. But do we know yet how many there are total?
We don't know how many illegal ADUs there are, if that's the question.
Well, you could say grandfathered or amnesty ADUs.
Right. And we really don't know that. There would be no way for us to know that, because if we found out that there was one, we would ask them to legalize it. Or we would say, sorry, this is not an ADU.
And when we talk about legalizing it, it's mainly making sure that the building is safe and was actually built to code, correct?
Right, right. And so some places, and Jordan may want to embroider on this a little bit, but I think some places have really gone to the extent of allowing an amnesty program, not because they want to know how many illegal ones there are, but for exactly the health and safety reasons. If you don't punish someone for letting the city know that there is an ADU, and then we can work with them to make it a safe place for people to live, then that's an ideal situation.
Yeah. So you're, Jordan, your recommendation for the planning commission is to look at the places where our respondees, or the people that answered the survey, had the most interest, even though it's an inference, because it's not an official type of survey, right?
Yeah, I think that in terms of weighing the pros and cons of possible revisions for Kenmore's ADU code, the other information that we provided should be more influential in your decision. But I think that some of the survey data can be used to continually, or to farther inform your decisions in terms of which revisions Kenmore ADU homeowners would most like to be revised, either for themselves or for future individuals who build an ADU.
Any other questions about the survey before we move on to the next?
Just a quick question. I don't see a question 10 in my pamphlet. Is that a collation error, or did we not do a question 10 in the survey?
Oh. We'll look. Maybe we skipped a page. In the packet or in today's materials?
The physical packet we got today. The printout.
The printout?
Yeah.
Okay. Thirteen, twelve, eleven. Right, it looks like 10 is missing. We can see what 10 was from the original... I think there may be, question 10 is something we should try to find.
Okay.
I'm not sure whether it's just a numbering issue or whether there is a question. My guess is it's just a numbering issue. So we will look at that. That is a question.
I think it was the hidden question on doubling the pay for summer interns to the city.
Right.
Jordan maybe left that one out.
You think Jordan had something to do with that? Any other questions?
I think this will come later, Mike, when you speak about the Arch recommendations a little bit, but I'm curious to see how, looking at the four top Arch recommendations here, how you think those align with the question 19 answers that Jordan just walked us through of what resources or changes to the current Kenmore code would have resulted in easier ADU adoption. I see one right off the top, right? Your first one lines up, I think, really well with the eight out of eight responses that we saw, but the other ones don't necessarily, right?
Right.
Any other questions on the updates to the survey? I'm curious, Jordan, and we may have talked about this, what was the modality of the survey? Was this email or paper-based? How did you reach out to the ADU owners?
First, we sent out a print mail inquiry, which asked for them to go to a website, and we provided a link as well as a scannable QR code that could then be accessed through the use of a smartphone, which linked to Survey Monkey. And six of eight respondents completed the survey through that method, and the other two completed the survey over phone with me. And it was the same survey, though. And then I submitted the completion of that survey after logging the responses to Survey Monkey.
Right, we had just the number that you saw in your packet, and then Jordan followed up. We had phone numbers. And so he called and talked to two folks, and then he left messages, and then all of a sudden, we received more. So the theory is that once he'd made his call, then folks remembered, oh yeah, I received that survey, and then some more participated.
And I apologize if you mentioned this earlier. I didn't hear it. What percentage of known ADU ownership does this survey reach? Eight out of how many?
Out of total ADU owners or out of those surveyed?
Total owners.
It's eight out of 53, I believe.
And we didn't have information on all of them? We were surveying only those in the last, how many years?
Since 2012, and it's eight out of 31 since 2012. And I believe it states that within the body of the document.
Do we happen to know if any of the ADUs, especially the ones that we surveyed the owners from, predate current Kenmore code regulations around ADUs, perhaps even back to 1998, prior to incorporation?
Do you know, what was the oldest one? I think the oldest one we had record of, I want to say was, are the early 2000s? Because of course, we would have permitted that. We don't have the pre-incorporation records. So I think it's safe to assume that of the 53, all of those were permitted while Kenmore, those were all permitted through the city of Kenmore. Is that correct?
Yes, the earliest one that I can recall being permitted is either 2000 or 2001. And I'm sorry, but I made a brief error earlier. It's eight of 29 ADU homeowners responded to the survey, of those 29 homeowners who had acquired an ADU since 2012.
So roughly 20...
Something.
Statistically, not bad.
Yeah. A small number, but statistically, okay.
Any other questions for Jordan's?
Well, you probably couldn't research this because it's King County, but do we know from King County records, when Kenmore was unincorporated, were there any ADU regulations? That's part of the problem, isn't it?
There were ADU regulations, I believe, because it is my understanding that some of the Kenmore regulations were adopted from King County code. But we'd have to go back to the original zoning code, which we can do. That can be a follow-up question. And then we can let you know, but we don't, we certainly don't have the records. We don't have the information from the county on it.
And things could have changed so much in 25 years.
Anything else?
Just one observation. This is the finance guy talking now. I looked at the square footage cost that were in the survey. I found those intriguing, and of course, reliability is always a question. But if we look at that against the average, or at least the range of ADU units, you've got a construction cost of between $1,000 and $500 per square foot.
That's pretty high.
That's about four times...
That's about four times what a single-family residence is. Maybe Mike can help us when he talks. I'm curious to know, in the affordable housing units that we have already approved, I wonder what the average cost per square foot of those is?
In the multifamily projects, is what you're thinking?
You know, long-term, if we're pricing ourselves out of the market, I don't know if the viability of this would be...
Well, I want to speak a little bit to that, because we've read before that ADUs may be a higher per-square-foot cost, but that may be because of the amenities and the quality. In total, it still is going to be less than a comparable single-family house. I can't imagine any scenario in which an ADU is going to, for example, if it were, if you were thinking of it in terms of purchase, there's no way an ADU would be the equivalent of a single-family house. And so I would assume that a rent relationship is similar. It would cost more to rent a single-family house, an entire single-family house, than an ADU, a smaller ADU, even if you had to move toward fixtures or whatever at a smaller, on a smaller scale that may be more expensive. We've read that before.
And that doesn't sound unreasonable, but I still look at the numbers and say, if you've got a capital investment of $270,000 on a 500 to 1,000 square foot, what's the realistic rental of that? Where would you have to price that in order to cover that sort of capital investment? And how does that compare to what subsidized affordable housing would be?
Right, and we have that information. That was in the background information, that they're rented for less on average than a comparable multifamily unit.
How do we think they can do that?
Because they're doing, because most of the people, at least in the background information, were doing a cash build, so they weren't borrowing money to build it. But that also asks questions, like, I think we need to look at our regulations, because if the only people who can really build these are very affluent people, then is that really going to help with our overall vision and goals for the city? And to participate in lowering, you know, affordable, lowering the cost of housing in Kenmore so we can increase our availability, because some of those statistics were very dismal compared to other smaller communities that are like us, and for sure, competing with bigger cities. You know, we're not, we need to do something.
I think the other thing we could say is that, and I think this was also in Jordan's background information, Jordan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that part of the reason, even though the build cost might be per-square-foot higher, but the rental rate was lower because of who they were renting to. It wasn't a market decision exclusively. It was, well, I'm renting it to an extended family member, or I'm having a, my parents live in the ADU, and I'm not charging rent at all. So there are other motivations besides just the market value. And I think that was a question about how many people were renting it, what was the motivation for renting? And I don't remember the exact numbers, but we could look at that question. That might give us some interesting feedback about who they were renting to. Do you remember what?
I don't remember right off the top of my head, but I did look at that, and my impression was exactly as you're saying. It appears that at least currently, most of the stock that's out there in these units are really probably either going for zero or some sort of a family subsidized.
Right.
Something enough to be...
So you know, if you're thinking about elder care, if you have somebody live in an elder care, assisted care, maybe total skilled nursing care, you're going to pay between $60,000 and $100,000 a year. And you don't know how long that relative's going to live. So it makes sense to create a housing situation where you can control the cost.
Where this goes for me is, as we talked about earlier, there are a range of reasons why we want to have AUDs. And with each one of those reasons, there's going to be something maybe we can do that would make that a good policy decision or make that a viable choice. So when we look at what we're talking about now, I think is a good example, where you have a family member, and the choice is either we're going to put them into $100,000, can't afford that, or something that's going to be, or we could spend some money, spend $250,000, $270,000, and build a unit out here where we could provide close care to them. That, to me, sounds like why we would want to have, allow this to happen. So the question then is, what are the things we can do in terms of regulation and zoning that would make that more viable? And there's going to be good decisions we can make, there are probably some bad ones.
And I think the pros and cons that were laid out were good. Like, I'm very curious about what Seattle is doing, because they've really relaxed their ADU regulations. And it's not just for that elder care situation. It's because somebody may have owned their home, but the taxes on that home are, sky's the limit. So this is a way for people to retain their home longer. So it is a market decision in a way.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a point in which you move away from, we're doing something to help our family or our extended family.
Right.
Making a family, wise family financial decision, to now we're getting into speculation.
It is speculation, but it's based on what's really happening. You know, taxes went up, what, 23% in Seattle, property taxes? How do you account for that if you're on a fixed income, but you own your home?
So you all are so anxious to have this next slide in front of you, which is talking as a commission about general goals and guidelines for this project. And this is Mike's idea, which is a very good one, to, before we launch into specific topics, just kind of have a free-form discussion between planning commissioners to say, what are the values that we most want to respond to? And these were some questions, what outcomes or consequences from increasing ADUs would be most desirable? What outcomes or consequences from increasing ADUs would be most undesirable or unacceptable? And who should benefit if the city makes ADUs easier to permit, and how? So we don't have answers to these questions. And what we're hoping is that the commission as a whole can have sort of a general discussion. We'll keep track, we'll make notes, to try to see if you can reach some type of a consensus or at least, you know, sideboards, whatever feels most appropriate in terms of considering ADUs. And I don't know, Mike looks like he has something to add.
Yes. Thank you. Part of the reason for asking these questions is because we recognize that both in your comprehensive plan and in other realms, you have policies and priorities for the community that in this context of talking about ADUs, may... that in this context of talking about ADUs may create some tension, right? Between neighborhood character, to put it, uh, oversimplify it, between, uh, neighborhood character, housing affordability, property rights, things of that nature. And so we thought this might be a useful way to try and get some of those things out on the table, see how far you could get with resolving them before trying to get into the nitty-gritty of the regulations.
I wasn't at the meeting last time, but I know that one of the questions that came up is what does the cities, what is a city's vision for short-term rentals? But when that was discussed, it, it's for short-term rentals, like three months or less. Does that mean that it's about like Airbnb-type owners who have converted their home for visiting people to, to, on a short-term basis, use that property? Has that created tension in the city?
The, uh, that is a question. Um, the city council was responding to a particular situation with an Airbnb that actually wasn't in an ADU, it was in a main house. And, and chose to not tackle the broader question of ADUs in turn, or Airbnb. ADUs could be used as an Airbnb or a short-term rental. So that maybe is something that, uh, that's one of the policy questions. That's the last policy question we'll get to. But I think more generally, uh, we're interested in a discussion of the commission about where are, where do you see these tensions falling out?
I'll, I'll attempt to make a, maybe bookend the discussion, at least in my own mind. I think on one side, these are neither left, right, positive or negative. But at, at the continuum, I see on one side what we were just talking about. How do we, can ADU, ADUs facilitate, uh, in-home family care? Whether that's an aged parent who wants to remain in their home, it's a family that wants to bring an aged patient, a, a parent into the home, or maybe it's a disabled family member who needs care.
There could be a young couple and they're saving for their first house.
It, it could be a number of instances that I could see where that seems to me to be valuable. It's something we want to look at. Uh, it could be an on, in a residential sit- situation for a caregiver, uh, for an elderly couple or disabled person. So I think those are clear needs that are out in the community right now that lots of people are struggling with. I hear it every day in my, my day job. On the other hand, we have questions like, do we want to use AD, uh, ADUs to facilitate density and infill within single-family resident, uh, zone areas? Do we want to facilitate the ability for developers or others, property owners included, to increase their property value and gain, uh, gain profit out of that? I see those as kind of the two opposite extremes. In between there is probably some other things. But I'll leave it right there. I, I tend to see those as the two opposite extremes. And I could see having very different policy discussions and decisions based upon that criteria. And we could probably, I'm sure, identify others in between.
And diving right into that, I mean, I, I agree with you completely. I think one of the issues that I heard in the background meeting last time and looking through the packet now, is we don't want to cut back on the regulations so much that developers could find loopholes for that single-family zoning and whatnot, and then find these loopholes and make a profit at the expense of the community. But I also feel that it's, it, you know, should be the property owners' right if they do want to, um, put an ADU on their house. And we should make that more accessible to property and community members of the city. Um, and I, I think it kind of, in that, in that term of making it more, um, accessible for homeowners to build and maybe make an ADU. We might have to make some, cut back on some regulations, but we also have to be careful in where we step so we don't, you know, um, decrease it so much that developers come in and take advantage of that and find loopholes. But making that accessible, I think it falls along the similar lines of almost, you know, expanding your house. It kind of increased, even that increases your property value. And that is, I guess, I feel, um, sort of the right of the homeowner or the property owner. It's if they want to increase and they want to make that happen, they should be able to, to, to pursue that. But it should still be rooted in the values of the community. And we should be, you know, it should be case by case and homeowner by homeowner. And we shouldn't have developers coming in and taking advantage of these cutbacks and regulations if we do decide to do that.
I'll just follow up real quickly. I, I, I think we're saying very close to the same thing. I think there are decisions that we could make about allowing ADUs that would have a significant impact on the character of the single-family neighborhoods. And I think that's where the rub comes in, is where's that line? Where do we cross that line from, yes, this is a public good? This is something we ought to be doing to, wait a minute, this is something that's going to change our single-family neighborhoods? Is that really what we want to have happen? Maybe it is. The other piece that I think it, it would be interesting to, to spend some time on it and get some clarity on is, what is the distinction clearly? Or how do we make a distinction between an ADU, which is really out there as a housing unit, uh, over and above what already exists, as opposed to a situation where a family wants to renovate a bedroom or part of the house in order to bring in a family member to live there? So basically, they're looking for ways to extend their family. That, and, and they're not looking, they're not looking to collect rent here. They're not looking even at barter services necessarily. Maybe they are. But that, to me, is the sort of thing that has a very low impact or relatively low impact on the character of the neighborhood. There's a social good there we'd want to support. Is that an ADU?
I don't think so.
So that's, that was one of the questions I asked at the last meeting.
I think it's a good one.
Because I was confused. And, um, I think the way that Lori answered it was if it has the facilities to accommodate another family or residence, then it becomes an ADU. Once it has those facilities.
So the facilities are? Bathroom, kitchen, living, sleeping space.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not just a bedroom that you've put a bathroom there? It has to be a full-service type of?
That you could live independently.
What brought this up in my mind is I noticed one of the survey respondents said that their purpose for building an ADU was an art studio. Is that an ADU?
Yep, if it has the facilities.
If it has, then that, that's, that has to, that's the key distinction.
Right, and, and the reason that the city does that is because there has to be a bright line. What is an ADU and what isn't? So if someone is creating a separate unit that has all the facilities and could be an independent unit, even if they're using it for something entirely different, which would be possible, it is regulated as an ADU because someone in the future could use it as an ADU.
And so these facilities would have to be isolated if it's within the house too? Um, or like altogether on one side, you can't have two kitchens somewhere in the house and have a family living side by side another family? And that wouldn't constitute as an ADU? But all the facilities have to be kind of isolated in maybe one portion of the house?
It, it is impossible to really generate what the layout would be. For example, if you had, and there's always a question about this. If, if somebody has a main kitchen and then they have a wet bar in the basement and they have a family room and they have a bedroom and a bathroom, is that an ADU? Well, probably not. I know some jurisdictions talk about whether they have the right voltage to accommodate an oven, for example. And Kenmore's is not that specific. But if you, uh, in some cases, you have to look really specifically at the use. But that kind of a situation would be very close, if not regulated, as an ADU.
Okay. But there's no fine line about how the layout or the?
No.
The structures, okay.
So if somebody came to the planning department and wanted to get a permit to build one of these kind of units, how would you know what they're going to use it for? Be, it, would it be based on the electrical grid and?
Yeah, we don't really even get into the question of who they're renting it to or what they're using it for. It's the question of, is it a separate unit? Is it a unit that someone could independently live in as a dwelling unit? That's the fundamental question.
Okay.
And then whether you use it for a family member, or you use it for your guests, or you use it as an art studio, or you use it as an auxiliary office, doesn't matter.
Okay.
It, it permitted as an ADU.
Okay.
I think I asked this question, and I'm not sure if we didn't have an answer or I just didn't listen. One, one question I did have as well that I do remember asking and I was not having an answer to, Jordan, based on your presentation last week or last meeting. Do, have we come up with a, or have we come up with a definition for short-term rental? That was an open question.
That was a question, and I included it in your attachment. We, Kenmore doesn't have a definition because Kenmore doesn't regulate short-term rentals. So the state has a new definition. And so that was the definition that we plugged in as most appropriate. And that did have to do with 30 days, et cetera. It's in, um, I think that was in attachment one, perhaps? And I, I quoted the definition in there. Get to that specific page. State law defines a short-term rental as, quote, "a lodging use that is not a hotel or motel or bed or breakfast in which a dwelling unit or portion thereof is offered or provided to a guest by a short-term rental operator for a fee for fewer than 30 consecutive nights."
And then, uh, two real quick questions. Again, this is kind of in the information category. Would, or could, ADUs ever have separate postal mailing addresses than the primary residence?
I sort of think they have separate mailing addresses, but that's a question we should check. I don't, I, I think they have two addresses, or it's an A and a B or something. But I will double-check that. That's another question on the list.
And in addition to that, and kind of related, is are they identified separately for emergency services? So if I'm living in an ADU and I need to call 911, how do I identify my location?
That's a great question.
I noticed in the survey results, Jordan, that, um, at least one of the people said that they were surprised to learn that they had to obtain a separate address for the unit. And I suspect it was for emergency services first and foremost. Is that right?
Um, I do recall, um, I believe, uh, several people complained that they wanted it to be more expedient to acquire a separate address. And I know that, um, not all ADUs have a separate address, but some of them do.
So would that just be for detached ADUs?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that.
We'll, we'll get that information.
And thanks, Lori, for reminding me about the information on the short-term rental. You've quoted the state regulations. Is, is that something that we're setting ourselves up for, uh, needing to incorporate into our municipal code as well?
Only if you answer the short-term rental question a certain way. So that one of your last policy questions is, is there, should there be any restriction on using ADUs for short-term rentals? If the planning commission made a recommendation that, yes, there should be, then we would have to define it. And I imagine we would take the state definition.
Do you see a, a need or a purpose for that definition outside of the ADU conversation? I know you mentioned the city council chose not to address it.
Yeah.
With the Airbnb scenario, but I have to think it's going to come back up again.
I, I will say that part of the question in front of the council at the time was whether the zoning code should be amended to address the topic. And the conclusion was they did not wish to move forward on any action. So if we were somehow wanting to do something about short-term rentals unrelated to ADUs, I would say, no, we already have our direction. And the direction was, we're not amending the zoning code, so.
So corollary to that then is the answer, yes. What we would define for short-term rentals would specifically be around the ADU conversation.
Correct.
Nothing greater than that.
Correct. So back to the broad questions. Mike looks like he has something to.
Sure, so what I'd heard earlier in the discussion was a couple of, um, populations, if you will, peop- uh, people that you would want to benefit, be able to benefit from ADUs, caregivers, uh, maybe elderly, other family members, uh, young couples or families. And the homeowners themselves, who would benefit from the, uh, possibly from increased value, possibly from rental income. Are there other people that you have in mind that, uh, we should, we should keep in mind would be able to benefit from this?
Well, I think just looking broadly, um, probably the city based on tax purposes and whatnot. Not looking at the community, but I'm just thinking, putting this out there, that that would be another group that would be affected by ADUs.
In terms of in, in terms of increased tax revenue for assessed value? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Mm-hmm.
What about larger families?
Like multi-generation families? Or just larger?
Yeah, I noticed in the, in the survey that, uh, one of the ADUs reportedly has more than four bedrooms.
Oh, wow.
For the, for ADUs, don't we have a limit on the square footage? Is that correct, Lori?
I think you do now.
It's pretty generous.
And is there a, like, minimum that a bedroom can be to be called a bedroom? Has to have a window and a closet, right?
That, yeah, there are building code minimums for a bedroom.
Okay.
Yeah.
The largest family size that, that's mentioned in, in here is four, four people. Um, which doesn't seem to me to be a large family. But, um, the reason I ask is because that might make you want to question whether the size limits on the ADUs.
Well, one of the current regulations that I read was that between both the ADU and the primary residence, we can have up to eight unrelated people. Hard to imagine that number without at least some large family. I mean, unless you were having four unrelated people in one residence and three in another, I think you're going to have some large family footprints if we're going up to that number.
But is, is there any reason to, or any desire to revisit that limit?
Doesn't it get back down to the financial ability to be able to build and the regulations to build? Or is part of the regulation the actual number of people that can live in the dwelling? Is that part of the regulation?
That's what the regulation is, right.
It is.
So that could mean seven unrelated people in the accessory dwelling unit and one unrelated person in the primary residence.
The owner, right.
Evidently, evidently.
And then a lot of the maximum, uh, square footage is related to the lesser of your property lot size or the size of the existing dwelling. And just using my lot in residence, for example, I could, I could put a ADU on my property of 1,500 square feet, which is pretty sizable by many standards, right? Maybe not modern Kenmore standards, but.
But even better than 1950's standards, so.
So that, that's legit two floor, two, two-floor family.
The question I had is can you have two accessory dwelling units on a piece of property, one attached and one detached?
Not in Kenmore.
Not in Kenmore. But you can do that in Seattle, right?
Now.
Now.
Get back to Vegas first.
And Kirkland is considering it.
Wow. Any other municipalities on the east side that already do that?
No.
So Seattle's leading the way then.
Right.
So Mike, I'll mention, um, as I look at these general goals and guidelines questions, the way I'm thinking about it is, can our, uh, enhancements to the current ADU policies fall kind of in the category of what I would call managed growth? Or, or is that really the risk here, right? That we would, um, relax the ADU standards and, and then the consequence being unmanaged growth? If, if it becomes so financially attractive to do that, that it starts to become predominant, and then I think we start to see impacts on, um, traffic congestion, school populations, single-family residents, character of neighborhoods, right?
They do.
Right, yeah.
Modern use, electricity. Modern use, electricity.
Yeah, to offer municipal services, right? So that's kind of for me the thing is how, how can this fit and stay within the realm of what we would consider managed growth? As I'm sure we can exercise managed growth over new development through the permitting process, would that be an opportunity as well or one? Maybe I don't understand well enough, how, how Kenmore manages growth all up to understand how the ADU regulations could fall either into the managed growth or unmanaged growth category?
So-
Like at what point could we just shut it down and say, we're starting, we're starting to have negative consequences? We need to pull this back.
Well, I'm going to be a devil's advocate here, you're giving me the perfect opening. You all remember your conversations the last two years about the manufactured housing communities? And there seemed to be a strong sentiment on the planning commission that the solution to affordability was increased number of units. Do you remember that conversation?
Yeah.
So if you look to this project, in Kenmore, the way we manage growth is, is that we either allow development in single-family areas to increase density or we allow more development in multifamily areas where in many cases we're already allowing pretty dense development or we expand multifamily areas into single-family areas. So I think part of the challenge here, if we're assuming that there's going to be new growth, if we really think that the solution to the problem of affordability is increase, an increased number of units, then I think you really have to think about balancing that with the desire to protect single-family neighborhoods. And I hundred percent agree, in the vision statement, there's a strong statement about protecting single, the city's existing single-family neighborhoods, but there is a tension here. And, and I, I don't think that it's fair to suddenly forget that you had that whole discussion about the importance of density as you approached this project.
I'm glad you, sorry, I'm glad you brought that up Laurie because, and I don't mean, I'm not intending to put words in your mouth, so just yell out if I'm characterizing, re-characterizing what you're thinking. As I recall, art, we made some very artful decisions when we did our last rezoning. We very purposefully made a policy decision that we wanted to preserve our single-family neighborhoods to the extent possible, but we wanted to facilitate growth and density through allowing more density and particularly for affordable housing within multifamily. And we created new multifamily areas. That's out there and I can look around and I see some positive results of that, but also see lots of capacity to use that that is still unused. Looking out there, as I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we looked at this and said, we had, with what we had already allowed in multifamily zones, we have more than enough capacity, not only to meet our growth management needs, but well beyond that. So this was part of the obstacle for me in the ADU discussions, why are we doing this? Why are we going back against our principle that we wanted to preserve the character and insistence of our single-family neighborhoods when it doesn't appear to me that there's a demand or a need to do that?
There is not a capacity need, that's very true.
So can you restate that, say that again?
The cities, the calculations that we did in two thousand and fifteen looking at number of units showed that we had extra capacity in the city for residential housing units to meet our growth target. There's no, there's no question there, that, that is absolutely true.
So then it just comes back to these other motives. What would the other motives be? And if we want to promote those opportunities, once we figure out what they are, is it in line with the vision of the city? And I like that you want to be consistent, while we just did this one element.
The only point that I'm trying to make is that in some discussions, one of the solutions to the affordability crisis has been to consider more housing units, that that is viewed as a way to deal with affordability. I don't know, and I'm not sure that that's right for Kenmore. I'm just pointing out that that was a discussion that occurred.
I'll move the bookend maybe a little closer to the center because I think the affordability question is really the next one, maybe, but don't mean to preempt what Mike may have to say. But I'm skeptical about how ADUs really provide more affordable housing. I suppose a lot of it is in definition, you know, if a single-family house is seven hundred and fifty thousand and an ADU is, well, it costs two seventy to build, it's what, what's the market value of that? Twice that? Maybe that's more affordable, but does it really get at what we really want? Which is housing that's available below market rates to family, low-income families? Is this an efficient way to do it? How many new units will we get out of it? How many new units do we really need? We've already created capacity beyond what we expect to use. What do we gain by potentially creating problems in our single-family neighborhoods? I don't see what's, what the reason there is for this.
Well, then you have to go back to the motives because I can totally see with the baby boomers aging, I'm on the very young end of that, but I'm in the group. And, you know, I don't necessarily want to be warehoused in a retirement center or a nursing home or whatever. I sat down with my lawyer this summer and strategized, what do I want to do? And he talked to my kids and we divvied up the jobs and, but now I have to implement that plan. So I would be motivated to downsize into something.
Carol, do you think, I think that's a legitimate-
I don't know if I want to build it onto the house I'm in, but if somebody else built one, I might move into theirs.
Right. I think the multi-generational living is, is a, a good outcome for us to consider, I think.
I think it is.
But the question I have then is, is there anything in the current regulations that impedes people's desire to do that? I, I'm not seeing anything immediately.
Yeah, I don't think there is, except for the cost. But that's-
But we can't really-
We can't regulate that.
Regulate that.
Yes, we want to subsidize government.
Yeah, that's a market-driven thing.
I agree, I mean, that was the conclusion I basically come to myself is I just don't see that. I keep asking myself, what are the changes to, this is just, where are the changes to pre-existing reg, we need to have in order to support the social, social-oriented goods that we're talking about here? And I don't know that, I don't have enough understanding right now to know what those are.
I think the primary ask that we saw both from Jordan's work and from looking at other municipalities is the owner occupancy requirement, right? But I think just as far as the multi-generational living scenario goes, that doesn't really seem to be an issue. Unless you kind of take it to a, an end state where in a multi-generational living environment, either the parent or the child is no longer part of that environment, then what happens to that enhanced property, right?
Well, you know, just apologize for interrupting, but in our zoning, we specifically allowed for group homes and social living environments that would be the answer to that. The answer isn't necessarily stay in the two big premises, the expensive premises you are right now. If you don't have family members, you're going to look for some other living arrangement. So I would look to that zone to make sure that we are not excluding that as a potential within Kenmore. I don't believe we are, I think we included that specifically. We had this very discussion that we wanted to make that happen.
Right, yeah, but then there's other, there's, I think, this is our opportunity to talk about what are the other desirable goals that the city might have? To become more inclusive, you know, income equality issues. We still are relatively close to the city, we're working hard to make sure that our transit will work easily and be an advantage to the residents here. But if it's an advantage to the residents here, people are going to want to live here because they don't want to live in Snohomish to get to downtown Seattle. Takes too long, you know, and then that whole market thing of, you know, I'm not ready to build an ADU and rent it to somebody I don't know. I don't really need to. But what if there are properties in the city where people can see that as an advantage? What are we doing to participate in that potential? I don't know, that, I'd like to talk about that. Because maybe somebody with a smaller, bigger, doesn't, I don't, I think that you'd have to include all types of properties, but the motivation for doing it would basically to be able to produce some income off their property. Is that being done other places? Is that part of the motive for ADUs?
Sure. Those are all things that came up during the housing strategy plan discussion. The reason that this is on your agenda-
True.
-is because it was something that's, that was a priority set on the, the actions coming out of that strategy plan. And if, I'm pretty sure I'm right in saying that the reason that, that it was placed high as a priority wasn't because the capacity was needed, but because the council and the commission wanted to promote different housing choices and that they believed that in general, ADUs help promote affordable living options. Both when they're rented out to, whether they're rented out to people you don't, you're related to or you're not.
I think the caveat though is if you're also living on that property, you're going to be a little bit more stringent about who you're going to let live there. Because you want to stay safe and, you know, have somebody that you can depend on. If that's what you chose to do.
That's what I gather, I don't have any data to, to point to, and maybe Jordan can recall something that he's read. But I think the, and this was mentioned earlier, I think the reason that a lot of rents are lower is because people tend to rent those units or the main house if they're living in the ADU to people that they know. My own story was that when our kids were little, and I was in graduate school until about fifteen years ago, so it wasn't that long ago. We met somebody through church shortly after we moved here. And since I was in school, I wasn't making a lot, my wife wasn't making a lot and we needed somewhere to live, and they had an old cottage in their backyard in Lake Forest Park. So we lived there for four happy years and paid less than market rent, I would say.
When I got married, I lived in a basement apartment that had its own separate entrance and essentially it was an ADU that had been built by this couple for their epileptic son. So he was always going to live with them, but he needed his own space. And this was, they probably built that apartment in the forties. And here it was, I'm not going to tell you how old I am, but it was great. We, we paid nothing, it was a furnished apartment that gave us an opportunity to save both incomes. We would never be able to have bought a house. I mean, when interest rates were eighteen percent, you had to have a lot of money to put down.
So if, everybody seems to be on the same page as far as those benefits are going. What if we turned it around and say, if we started, if you started loosening up the rules, trying to promote ADU production more, at what point would it get to be too much? What would, what consequences would be unacceptable?
Well, I can tell you that this family was in a single-family neighborhood, but people knew that they had this little apartment. But we also had to work with the neighbors to park appropriately. So parking was an issue, but once we worked it out with the neighbors, it wasn't an issue. But I would imagine, especially as you get closer to the highway, that's the issue is parking's already out of, it's the issue of the day down here. So the further away you get from the highway, it might not be as much of an issue. What, what's the regulation currently on parking spaces when you add an ADU? Do you have to have that extra parking space in your driveway or can it be on the street?
It would only be on your property, street parking doesn't count.
Okay.
But the fact is that most single-family homes already have, if not a two-car garage, they have, also have a driveway space and so they already have plenty of space for that extra car. And so it doesn't usually force some, somebody to pave, you know, another space or anything like that.
Well, I think, Mike, you're asking the right question because if we look at that right-hand extreme, we're now looking at things that involve growth and involve infill. What are the things that would be detrimental to a single-family neighborhood that would come out of that? Parking is one of them. And we, again, specifically, we made a policy of concentrating density in areas that were close to our transit modes. If you look at single-family neighborhoods, they're outside of those zones, so you're going to have a parking issue. Now, to the extent I think you're right, Mike, most single-family neighbors, neighborhoods would have homes that would have onsite parking, so it wouldn't be a problem. But what if they didn't? To me, that's the sort of thing that you want to build into your code that protected the existing homeowners from that burden. I'll put the big one on the table, owner occupancy. That is a huge one. I'll fess up for those who don't know, I was one of the folks who was pushing on the Airbnb issue and short-term rentals. And in my talk with everybody in my neighborhood, we're talking here, not a handful, but dozens and dozens of people, you know, who showed up here to talk about it. That was their major concern, was that absentee ownership was leading to behavior that wasn't characteristic to the neighborhood and was actually creating dangerous situations. So I think I would put that on there as one of the rectifying things, one of the things we could put into code that would help mitigate the potential ill effects. I think we could probably come up with some others as we go along. I think size is something we ought to look at, we've got rules out there right now, does that make sense? At what point does an ADU, what's the difference between an ADU and a short plat? Is there unintended consequences of creating incentives of one versus the other? How does that impact things like taxing and code and everything else? I don't quite, I don't understand that, it may be-
Well, I think the, the questions that you want to try and answer first are what problems are you trying to prevent?
So the problem we try to, we try to prevent would be infill to the extent that your single-family neighborhood is no longer a single-family neighborhood. What you've done is by a creeping progression of infill, you converted your single-family neighborhood into a multifamily neighborhood. If you look at one or two jurisdictions that I've read of, where they're getting to the point where they would allow three ADUs plus the main residence, well, that's four. If, if you're in a, an R4, R6, you, you're now into a multifamily neighborhood zone is what the potential is. That to me would be, that would completely change the character of the neighborhood, the neighborhood would no longer be what it was and what people want to live in.
Let's take, oh, sorry about that, but just taking a step back, I mean, we're kind of talking about it like every house in the single-family neighborhood would accumulate or, you know, put on an ADU. But in actuality, it might be one, if even that, in some of these neighborhoods. And so I think looking at that, I don't think if we do decrease regulations, I'm not saying that's my stance or anything, but I'm saying if we do decrease regulations, I don't think we're going to have a huge blossom of these ADUs just popping up all over the city. There's still these other factors that, that come into play here, such as cost. It is very expensive to do. And I know that there's lots of community members who like their privacy and, you know, probably wouldn't feel comfortable having another family so close to them. And that's, that's, a huge mentality is having your own space. So I don't, if we do bring back these regulations, I don't think it's, it's going to, you know, it's going to change too much too quickly, if anything. And so that's just something to keep in mind, is, it's, it's these occasional ADUs that pop up here and there. So, yeah.
I think the short plat conversation is an interesting topic. I had a question around that, that Mike, you might have been about to answer that as well. With a short plat situation where someone is dividing their lot and then has a separate taxable entity that can be built upon, I know from my neighborhood, we all receive as neighbors notice of that and we are allowed to comment on it. And usually there's a variance, or oftentimes there's a variance involved in the short plat conversation as well. I don't know if that's the case with ADUs, does that raise to the level of community, neighborhood communication?
It's not, no, not currently.
So Mike, what are some of the other downsides? So, Mike, what are some of the other downside of loosening the regulations? Are you aware of other municipalities or jurisdictions that wish they hadn't invited ADUs in? Maybe it's, it's kind of a new thing in a way.
Well, I, I think it's a great discussion to have because, as I told Lori, I'm watching what Kirkland is doing, maybe I shouldn't name them. And a little bit Seattle, too. And I think that discussions there have been really focused on increasing the supply of affordable units and, and housing choices. And to the extent of losing sight of some of these other issues or possible consequences. And so Kirkland is considering doing away with the owner occupancy requirement, allowing one attached and one detached unit on a single lot. Doing away with minimum lots sizes, if they had that already. Expanding the minimum ADU size to twelve hundred square feet. Allowing ADUs to extend their heights higher than the, than the main residence. Okay, and a number of other things that I don't remember. And I'm not trying to pass judgment on them, I'm just saying that, that those challenge some of the other goals that you have, would have for your community, I think, and would like to help you think through them before getting too far along.
Well, I'd like to comment on that height restriction, because I know in Bellevue, the homes, the older Bellevue homes that were tiny but had big lots, they were close to downtown Bellevue, and they would build these three-story monstrosities right next to a little Rambler. Suddenly, the Rambler has no daylight. But they still let it happen, so it just keeps happening. You know, would we want to do that in Kenmore?
So I think this is another really good segue. And you all may disagree with me, but I think pretty much everyone has had a chance to sort of have this freewheeling conversation, what's important, what's not important. And that conversation will flavor looking at some more specific policy issues. So I don't know if you're ready to do that, or you want to keep going. At some point, we'll have to get back to the, the specific questions that would direct us into looking at changes. But I don't want to cut short your conversation. We would sort of filter it into these specific questions. Do you have any thoughts?
I think it makes sense to move into the specific areas unless anyone disagrees.
All right.
No, I agree. Is part of that going to be Mike's presentation of the work group's recommendations?
Probably Mike can speak to each of those topics as we have a question that relates to that, if that would be useful.
Yeah, I think from what I've seen and heard, I think that task group did a lot of work and a lot of good stakeholdering to come to those conclusions. I think they're well worth hearing.
Yeah. All right. Well, with that, so I have a couple of slides here. Altogether, I think there, I can't remember whether there were seven or eight specific policy questions. And we can jump in. They don't have to go in any particular order. But if you, as a group, feel that you can begin to put some answers to these questions, and that's what's going to guide us as we look at whether the regulations need to be amended. So the first one, the big kahuna. Should the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs be removed? And we provided lots of pros and cons. And Mike might want to speak. This was an Arch, this was a topic that the Arch Group, which I was on, by the way, addressed.
Well, the one thing that I would add that we haven't so much mentioned already is that in Arch's experience working in other communities, we found that it was a, that requiring one of the units to be occupied by the owner was a big step toward community acceptance of ADUs in general. It may, you know, the, the idea of, you know, danger to this, to the neighborhood, of absentee ownership may, may be true, maybe more perception than reality. But at any rate, it, it made a difference in the communities accepting ADUs, you know, being permitted.
And starting on page six of your memo, this is where we tried to use the information that Jordan had collected and the information from Arch, et cetera, to identify pros and cons. And so I don't know if it would be helpful to talk through these, or if, you know, however you want to approach this conversation, whether you can, and there's a sub-question related to that, but this first main conversation is, should there be some sort of occupancy requirement for ADUs?
So just starting that off, based on the motives that we've talked about tonight, I feel like if we kept that in place, it would still meet all of the motives that we have about having multi-generational, you know, generations living on the property or having a caretaker, or even as a source of income. I think that can all be done still with an owner, having them occupy the, the, the main residence. Also looking at the, one of the cons for taking this, this regulation out would be that it would kind of open up an opportunity for developers to kind of find this loophole and build, and build these duplexes and single-family zoned neighborhoods. And I think that would be an issue that we probably wouldn't want to come about. And so I think, that, those are just my thoughts, that I think we can meet our motives if we kept it and prevent the overdevelopment of these single-family neighborhoods.
And I like your comment, Mike, about keeping it in this twenty-year framework, because it's hard to imagine what fifty years from now will look like. It might be quite built up by then, but, you know, Kenmore seems to lag behind our neighbors. And what we want to do is keep pace at some point. But I, I like your comment that by keeping that in there, it prevents some of the cons. Poor maintenance, you know, bad relationships with the renters, with your neighbors, whatever.
This is maybe just restating, but I feel that retaining the owner occupancy requirement does two important things. One, it's very consistent with the goals we have on the social side, on my left-hand side. On the right-hand side, it's, it's the best mitigation option we have for all of the worst concerns we would have from additional infill or growth in development over time, uncontrolled infill and growth over time. So I, I think it's, it's a very important, very powerful to leave that in there.
And I think it would be very proactive to kind of keep some of that bad behavior down as well. So instead of trying to play damage control later on, if we keep that owner occupancy there, they're there and they're the first line, and it'll, it'll help prevent the bad behavior in the future.
Question. I, I think from my viewpoint, I'm not totally sold on the idea of strict owner occupancy. I like some of the alternatives that were finessed a little bit, whether it's an immediate family member or an extended family member. I, I like that flexibility, because I can see where someone may want to provide a house in the neighborhood where their parents live, but they know they need more help. And I, I just think that's, the motivation is important. I support that type of motivation.
In my mind, I feel if there's a family member who's maybe moving in long term, that the title might be signed, the residence or the, the property might be signed over to that person, too, or that might be sold to that person. That's kind of one of the issues I see. I can see where, where you're coming from, and I totally get that. But I'm just thinking if somebody's living there long term, usually they, something is worked out to that extent. And that's not, it wouldn't be a very common case for that to happen.
Ownership is just who bought it? Who got their name on the title? And maybe a divorce. I mean, there are just so many different variations on that aspect of, of ownership. That's why I, I prefer being a little more finessing in how we do it. And you may have somebody that could be about to die, and you're trying to resolve those issues ahead of time. Just so many different factors. I don't know if we can address them all, but.
No, that, that brings up a, a good, good kind of point, though. If, if somebody is in their later stages of life, or the, the property owner's in their later stages of life, and they may be off at some, at the hospital or some sort of facility, the person who'd be caretaking for their house, and if that owner had some resident in the ADU, they shouldn't be kicked out just because that person is no longer on the property or living at the site. If they have to have a family member come in and maybe watch over the property for a time, I, I can see, I can, I, I, I see what you mean there.
I'm, in the vein of personal anecdotes, I'll talk about the ADU on my street, where a family, husband and wife owned the main house, and then they built an ADU over the garage. But they lived in, they were a wealthy family, they lived in Lake Shalane for six months out of year. And they had a daughter who lived in the ADU. And then the other house, part of the house became a rental. So they used that extended family relationship to keep their ADU, even though much of the year they lived in the house. But then they had this relative who was acting as the owner when they were gone.
I think that's the key. Someone in a position that can act as the owner with the owner's interests, right?
Yeah.
Pride of ownership, which I think the, the owner occupancy certainly achieves, the ex, the immediate family member may achieve. And I start to get less bought in as it moves to extended family.
Do, were there potentially any cons to that alternative that you may have found or, or thought of?
Let's see. So, one thing that we were thinking, it was that if the commission was interested in this approach, then, we don't have the specifics, but that, that did come up. What are, how would you enforce that? If there are other places who have done that, how do they enforce it? How do they define it? So just stepping back, I think I hear consensus for retaining the owner occupancy agreement. Am I missing anything here? Okay. And then the question of whether you want us to pursue looking at immediate, kind of immediate family, extended family, how it's done in other places to refine that question. If you're interested in that, you should, if, if it's like, no way, we, we're not interested, we won't do the research. If a majority is interested in that, we can do some research on that topic.
Well, the only question I would have is, how do you enforce it?
That, that's part of the issue with that, I will say. Although, I'm not sure it's that much different from the owner occupancy requirement.
Yeah.
Again, complaint basis.
Right. We've, we've had several homes
But we could look at that.
in our neighborhood who, the owners don't live in them, they still own them, but they rent them.
Right.
And so it's not the same as when everybody who was living in their home owned it and lived there. But that's a reality. People can do whatever they want with their property. But this would, regulation would kind of put some safeguards on the neighbors, for the neighbor's sake, right?
Mike, am I reading page six correctly? Arch's preliminary recommendation is to keep the owner occupancy requirement per your white paper?
Yes.
Um, am I incorrect in believing that it also allowed for immediate family members to satisfy owner occupancy requirements?
I think that, I was going to say that, but I hadn't read, read it in a while myself. So I think that's the way we had worded it.
I'm not sure extend, expanding the owner occupancy requirement helps us achieve any of the goals that we identified earlier. Does anyone believe that it does? Does it make multi-generational family living more payable? You still have an owner that is not on the property, right?
It's come back down to how do you enforce that? And why would you need to?
But I don't know if we're, i- if it's any different from our ability to enforce the owner occupancy we have today.
Exactly.
So I think we always have to assume there's some non-compliance going on.
Sure.
It's how much of that non-compliance are we comfortable with?
Well, it, it really comes down to how does it affect the neighbors? Because essentially, it's like this little paragraph says, you're allowing your neighbors to become a duplex. So if it doesn't interfere with your life, why would you care?
Have there been cases of people, or have there been reported cases of violators of the owner occupancy requirement? Or how many cases have there been of that?
I think there have been cases. I don't know exactly how many.
Not an immense number, though.
Yeah.
Um, after going through a car complaints, I believe I found eleven individual complaints, or eleven, um, a number of complaints relating to eleven individual properties where it was alleged that owner occupancy may not have been satisfied.
Yes, for, when we begin to move away from the hard definition or the hard statement of must be owner occupied, you begin to move down a fairly slippery slope pretty quickly. And to be able to write rules, regulations, code, to backstop that becomes a little tricky, more than a little tricky. So I'm a little concerned about moving away from that, that hard line. To me, what would maybe make that easier is, when I think about this, I think about the situation, if you've got an owner occupant, you've got somebody who is immediately available and is accountable to correct a problem. If the non-owner occupant has that level of authority, and I'm not sure legally how they get that, and is available, maybe that, that, but again, I think we're, we're kind of splitting a hair here about as soon as you can get. So. That's right. I mean, it, this is all about accountability. And I think there's a general feeling that an owner occupant is going to have a more vested interest. Because their, it's their home, it's their property, it's their neighborhood, and they're living with the people on either side of them who would be impacted, and they're, they're going to be available to hear about it. So if, once you put a non-owner occupant in there, that could be anything. That could be anybody. Now, you could say it's an immediate family member. What good is that? I mean, if, if they bought the property, running the property is speculation. They're not going to listen to the owners on either side, unless, of course, there's complaints to the city and the city has to take action. Who would the city take action against? I just, that's where I start to lose, I think we start to lose any amount of control and mitigation that we would have by a bright-line owner occupancy requirement.
So, so let me just throw this out here. This is totally off the top of my head. Would the commission be interested in, already we've decided retain the owner occupancy agreement, there's concern about extending that, would it be a slippery slope? But we've heard a couple of examples where it might be useful. Should there be an opportunity for an owner to make a case for allowing the ADU to continue without owner occupancy? I am traveling to France for a year, and I have this ADU, and I want somebody living in there, but for my year, I'm leasing my house. I'm not saying yes or no, I'm saying, should that person be able to make a case? I am dying, and I am having to go into hospice care, and I have an ADU, and I can't live in my house, but my and I can't live in my house, but my aunt is going to come and live in my house for me. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I think that there may be cases where it does fit the goals, but the problem is we don't know how to manage it.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you hit the point that, to the extent we've, I think we've already required that if you're going to operate an ADU, you have to register that somehow with the city.
Correct.
So if we had a hardship petition exception-
Mm-hmm.
-that would cover some of these examples, I think that would cover it. I would think about, if that happened, we'd be communicating that petition for hardship exemption to the most immediate neighbors. They would have an opportunity to weigh in on that, and be aware of what the circumstances is. That might be acceptable.
And I would like to say that of the survey respondents, I don't think that the eight out of eight respondents asking for the revocation of owner occupancy requirements did so because they wished to rent out both units. I think it's rather that additional flexibility that might be caused by the, at least some other variety of owner occupancy, or the complete removal is what was wanted. And I think that other formulations, such as immediate or extended family member, could still be very efficacious at preventing speculative development, while still perhaps responding to that desire for the increased flexibility over the use of the ADU, which is also one of the main appeals of ADUs, is that it can address a variety of different and changing familial and personal circumstances for housing.
So I have something to offer, which might be that we look at what other places have done about this, but we think of it in the vein of a hardship exemption? I thought I saw support, I see support from three to that.
I think that's legitimate.
Okay, and we can come back with information, like, has anybody ever done a hardship exemption? What would that look like, et cetera, if that would be useful?
But I think it also would cement our decision if you came back with, what happens when you don't require owner occupancy? Like, if you get so lax that you don't, the owner doesn't have to live in either of the units?
Yeah. I don't think we have good data on that.
Okay.
And-
So it's just common sense that we want to keep some safeguards on the property by having the owner there?
And-
Are you asking as to what percentage of units would be owner occupied if the requirement was lifted? Or are you rather asking, like, how maintenance, like, the quality of maintenance would be affected by the removal of the requirement?
Are there other jurisdictions that do not require owner occupancy, and what happens?
Right now, I believe, a number of them, but the most notable probably being Vancouver, Seattle, and Portland.
And I think, I could be wrong, Jordan, you tell me, but I don't think we have the data. It's been so recent-
Yeah.
-that I don't think we have, we don't know what the outcome will be. We're speculating about the outcome, and we're balancing this desire to protect the single-family neighborhood, so...
I think that's a very important point. One of the things I've noticed, too, in reading through all the literature, including what was provided here and elsewhere, is you really seem to have a movement in the very mature, larger cities toward more infill. They have different economic and social demands than we see in Kenmore today, and they're responding to it. I think you even see that in Kirkland. You have a large population of millennials who are working in Google and whatnot, and they want housing and are willing to have housing of this sort. The city has made a planning choice to facilitate that. We get to make that same choice, or one way or the other, and I think that's what we're coming back to. Where, again, what is our vision for Kenmore? Is that the direction we want to see? Maybe that's where we'll be 50 years from now, but the decision we make right now could expedite that movement. Is that really where we want to go?
We might when the bus line zipping up to the train happens.
All of that excess capacity, we think, could, but we don't know. I mean, do we really think all of that capacity will be used up?
As far as predicting the effects of the removal of that requirement, I looked at the illegal ADU market, and I thought that that could provide some evidence of what the possible effects would be, because obviously owner occupancy requirements aren't applied when the ADU isn't permitted within the jurisdiction. And that's the first item on the pros. And I can also farther add that, for that study, it found that two-thirds of the neighbors who bordered an ADU cited no adverse impacts of their proximity to the ADU. And of the third that did have complaints, the most common complaint was the congestion of on-street parking.
Yeah, I would imagine that's really what the problem is.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, retain owner occupancy, and we will do research on hardship exemption, but sort of that whole question. So, are you ready to tackle another question, or?
I think that was the tough one.
The tough one? Okay. All right, so, question number two. Should additional parking requirements be removed? So, as we said, current, single-family homes have to provide two parking spaces, but they also have to have a 20-foot-long driveway. And so essentially, you have four parking spaces. Now, you'd have to think about parking in terms of tandem parking. Somebody might park in front of a door where there was another car behind it. But for an ADU, you have to have one additional parking space. And so again, this is on page seven. We have pros and cons, and some of the pros. Inhabitants of ADUs are less likely to own a car. Again, the comment, the con is the comment that Jordan just made, that of the complaints that were received, one of the most common was that the street parking was congested. Again, that was in San Francisco, so a slightly different situation. Reduced parking may result in lessened development costs. So that, you know, if we're realizing that these things are expensive, if you don't have to provide a parking space, or you consider that that driveway actually provides four spaces on a lot, that reduces the cost to somebody who's interested in an ADU. So you can read through the pros and cons.
Dangerously thinking out loud, but it sounds to me like the current regulation effectively creates a requirement for five parking spaces to be available for a single-family residence.
It could be if you didn't want someone to be parking in front of the garage.
That's right. So, could we, as part of the ADU licensing or certification process, require that, as part of that permit review, the owner would provide, would demonstrate how they would provide six parking spaces? That would be five plus the additional one for the ADU.
Or four?
Four plus one?
Oh, I'm sorry, four plus one, there. Here's the numbers, I can't do it.
So a parking space-
Must be getting late. So it'd be five, yeah.
Separate from the four, the two in the garage and the two on the parking pad?
The one additional, which would give them the option of doing that on their existing property, they would show how their existing property, how they could accommodate that additional.
Make the requirement more stringent, is what you're saying.
Well, today, you said it was-
Today, it's, they can accommodate, we would say that they had adequate parking if they had the two in the garage and the two on the parking pad.
Oh, we would, okay. So I would leave it at there, because they'd need to demonstrate that they have that, as part of their application.
So you would not make it more stringent?
No, I wouldn't make it more stringent. I don't think you need to do that.
I'm not sure I understand the garage requirement.
So, for a single-family house, you have to have two parking stalls. And most typically, those are provided in a two-car garage for the house. But a separate code section requires that you also provide a 20-foot driveway between the street and the garage, because people often park in the driveway. So theoretically, you have four parking spaces anytime you have a garage plus a 20-foot driveway. Because technically, you could park two cars in your garage, and you could park two cars on your parking pad in front of your garage.
But there's no hard garage requirement?
There's no requirement for a garage, but it's pretty unusual to see a new house built without a garage.
A new house, for sure, yeah.
Right, and you're thinking of a pre-existing house that wanted to do a detached ADU? Right, they would have to provide three stalls, whether that was one in a carport and two on a driveway, or a driveway and a carport, and then they'd have to provide a third spot. Correct.
And does that spot have to meet any requirements?
It has to be, I believe it has to be impervious surface. Can't park on the dirt.
So as part of the application process, there would be a requirement that the owner demonstrate that it's compliant with-
Correct.
-the existing code?
Correct.
That may be something that goes back into the category of, can we, or would we enforce it? But at least it gives us the basis for enforcement, and I think that's the best you could ask.
And I don't think you'd want to be more restrictive.
No, I don't.
But I don't think we should take it away either, because if we do reduce the amount of parking, then we will have more street parking, and that'll create more complaints and whatnot.
Accident rate would change.
Yeah, so we can just, I feel we can just leave it, yeah.
So I'm hearing three that want to leave it as is?
I, yes.
Four, okay. Oh, okay, all right. All right, it's 8:45. Do you want to tackle one more?
Sure.
Where, okay. So, this is a tougher one. Let's go to number four at 8:45. How about that? Should there be a reduced height limit for an ADU? This one is interesting in terms of what other places have done. And I would suggest not that a number be chosen, but that a policy direction be chosen that would be eventually implemented with the number. So one approach, which is Kenmore's current approach, is that an ADU can be the same height as the existing residence. Another approach would be to say that the ADU can be up to the height limit, regardless of whether the residence is shorter or taller. A third approach is to say that an ADU has to be shorter than the existing residence. Do you see, do you see the difference between those approaches? And the height question is interesting, because it often, for a detached ADU, is related to privacy and how people feel about that. Although if you allow a taller ADU, then it takes up potentially less green space, so more yard. So Kenmore's current standard is 35 feet. That's basically three stories, I would say, in 35 feet. So, again, what we're thinking about, go to 35 feet, which is the restriction on any new single-family residence, go to the same height as whatever the other building on the lot is, or the third approach is to say the ADU has to be, except for a single-family ADU, but if you had a two-story house, your ADU had to be smaller, shorter, to minimize it in relation to the house.
I'll step out there. I think that it should be the same height as the existing dwelling space, or it could be taller. I'm thinking about two different scenarios. I don't think it should be-
I thought this was going to be an easy question.
I don't think it should be, like, if you had a single-story home, I don't think you should be able to build a three-story ADU. That doesn't make sense.
And, I mean, it's an accessory dwelling unit, it's not a, it's supposed to be smaller. It's not the dwelling unit.
But the code currently doesn't mandate that the ADU be smaller than the primary, does not.
I know, I know, I'm saying, and that's what we're covering.
It does require, not for height limits, but in terms of spatial size, that it be smaller than the primary residence.
Not if I'm reading the content correctly, maximum floor area for detached ADUs, 10% of lot size, or 50% of the primary dwelling unit.
So it'd be smaller.
What if, yeah, I guess you're right, if it's a lesser value of those two choices, I guess it would be. But I'm imagining 10% of a large lot.
Yeah.
I think it has to be smaller.
Smaller, yeah, you're right.
Yeah. And it's interesting, for attached ADUs, we use the greater of 50%.
I mean, looking at our motives back again, we're trying to provide some smaller dwelling for either multigenerational family members to live in, or for a caretaker, or a smaller source of income, or if it does get into affordable housing, even though we're not going down that route, a smaller building would be more affordable than a larger one. So I don't see a reason why, like, it should be as big as the house, or bigger. And it's not right now, but at least we have that established, that it should probably be smaller.
I'll venture out. I'm okay with multiple level, but it can't be more than the existing residence. Kind of tempted to say it can't be more than the residences on either side, that gets into the privacy issue. That all assumes, of course, that this is all within the same size limitation. So you could get higher, which could reduce your building cost, but your footprint is falling. If you could build 1,000 square feet, you could have a two-story, 500 feet on each level. I could see that as being a reasonable approach. I'm not sure.
So I'm thinking of-
Who would make those choices, but-
I'm thinking of a scenario where you have an existing home, that's an older home, might be a rambler. But you want the ADU to have that possibility of having a unit on the second floor and a unit on the ground level. Would that work? Would that, would that violate it? But what if it was like, your common area for the ADU was on the main floor, and the bedrooms were upstairs?
That's just one ADU, then.
It is, but it would be taller than the main residence if it's a rambler.
The other example is to put an ADU over a garage.
Yeah, so you'd still have that.
Right. This maybe is one. What I'm hearing is you do not want the ADU to be too tall. That there may be opportunities for it to be close to, or shorter than, the existing residence. This might be one where with even that general level of direction, we might be able to come back with some options for you. Does that fit with the intent?
I think I like what you're saying, my, and I support the idea of allowing multiple levels, because you could end up wanting a garage for that, and they put the garage on the bottom level.
Sure.
But I also support the idea that it not get too tall, so their flexibility to fit within the other parameters.
I would like to put out there, even though it does have the benefit of having a smaller kind of green footprint, if we do build up, it would still have adverse effects, blocking light to the surrounding area, and also blocking air above. So it's not, that kind of benefit can also be canceled out by the other things it might take away as well.
I think a lot of it depends on the character of the lot that you're building. You have a large lot, you have a strangely configured lot with the people next door, you know? Can we build into the application process some sort of city evaluation? Because I know you do evaluations when people go through a permitting process, looking at the lot itself, and determining whether something is- looking at the, the lot itself and determining whether something is suitable. Can we have that, uh, some language like that included? So that if you had a situation like that where a two-story just didn't fit-
Yeah.
-the lot or the neighborhood, the city would be able to look at that and say, no, we don't see that as being appropriate.
And that would be ideal. I, I'm not sure how, um, how excited Development Services would be about adding sort of a design review component and making that judgment, but I'm happy to talk with them about options and, and, um, and as I said, we can come back with some alternatives, and I, including, uh, sort of a process question, if that-
That'd be great. Would they like cookies?
They do. Okay, five to nine, you tell me. We can save these till September seventeenth, or if you're still on a roll, we'll go to another one.
What about the lot size with the detached ADU? Do we wanna tackle that, or is it too complicated?
That's, I think that is a big conversation. We, let's look at the next page. Here's some other ones.
It's, it's talking about the minimum.
How about number five? Should more than one ADU be allowed on a single residential lot?
It depends.
I think it might defeat some of the motives that we have set in place right now. Uh, the, going back, if we have more than one ADU allowed on a single residential lot, about families, multi-generational caretakers, you know, just things like that. If we put more, we, uh, uh, a homeowner shouldn't need more than one to, to meet those motives that we established.
But what if they had the space and they wanted to have a dwelling ADU, but they needed to do their work on that property too, and the other ADU was their office space?
Well, maybe that's not an ADU if, if it doesn't have a kitchen.
Well, that's, she said if it, but if it had the kitchen, then it would be. Yeah, okay.
And then it kind, well, it kinda goes around and finds a loophole in that single residential lot thing too. And then if we add more and more, then it does become more than just a single residential lot.
I think it would have to depend on the size of the lot.
Yeah, I think that the one, uh, additional option here that's interesting is the, um, that there can only be one detached ADU. Have one attached and one detached, but no more than one attached. So no more than two maximum, and only one of which can be detached.
And would there be lot size restrictions on that, though? I mean, that's the complication right there.
Well, I think the current lot size restriction should work, because you're not, with the attached unit, you're not affecting the footprint at all.
It, it, it's kind of a dicey little-
I guess my analysis of this is pretty much the same as Nathan's. If, if you, if we're trying to support the left-hand social goods, you don't need more than one. If you're gonna need more, if you want more than one, you're looking out here. We're back into the infill growth.
Right.
Uh, for-profit.
Or if your family is that big, just buy a bigger house.
Yeah, I mean, it's, gosh, it would be cheaper, a thousand dollars a square foot.
Yeah, probably.
It would probably be the smarter thing to do. So I have, I have trouble going beyond one ADU unless we're saying that we really value the left, the right-hand stuff here, and we, and we're really looking to support. And I, I don't think, that's, that's not our consensus. We're doing that, we're doing it elsewhere.
Yeah, at least not for this short term that we're looking at.
'Cause we're not trying to infill, we're trying to accommodate certain kinds of-
Yes, we've, we've already accommodated, over-accommodated, given the projections we've seen for both affordable housing and additional growth.
The density.
The density, so.
Okay.
There doesn't seem to me to be a compelling reason, uh, to want, to allow or need more than one ADU, certainly at this point. Fifty years from now, when we look a more like Seattle, you know, somebody will think we were stupid to not make this happen, but that's gonna happen anyway, and we won't care, we'll be long gone.
Well, maybe Nathan will still be here.
Yeah, he'll still be here.
So I'm hearing no.
No, just one, at this point. And I, uh, there were some subcategories under parking that I wanna go back to. I, I skipped over those. Um, so when we were talking about the, um, the parking requirement, and I think it was, um, the group's consensus to leave parking as it is currently, but there were a couple of other options that, um, I didn't mention. And those had to do with providing exceptions for the street parking requirement near transit or for small ADUs, studios or, um, those less than, um, two bedrooms. Those were a couple of examples.
I think that if the ADUs are being kept around for a long period of time, 'cause once they're established, it's not like they're gonna be taken down in a couple of years, that eventually some family or some resident might move in with vehicles. And so I think if we keep that there, that if that does happen, then we can still make sure that that's not an issue.
I'm trying to imagine that, that studio scenario that you were talking about, and that doesn't feel that per, um, relevant to the single-family residential. I can see that maybe more in a mixed-use environment.
Now, it's going in the same place. We're talking about single-family neighborhoods. We've already loosened or removed the parking requirements, uh, in our multifamily. And we've put those next to the transit, so we've already got transit surrounded by areas that have little or no parking requirement. To extend that further out into the single-family neighborhoods, I think we're just undercutting everything we said on the first, I, I first item.
I'm just thinking of those adjoining streets that are-
Yeah, if anything else, if, if we're, if we do find that these, if they're small or ADUs or others that don't use parking, maybe that helps offset some of the, the use we were gonna see anyway, and, and the fact that we're, we're gonna see that if we underestimated the parking requirements for the multi-use areas, we've got some safety valve here for that. We don't see that become a competition, so.
I think it would be a safer option just to remove the parking requirement.
We can always revisit this in the future. Like you can't, you'll never be able to go back.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm hearing that you wish to continue leaving the parking as-is with no breaks for size or transit. Is that, yeah?
Oh, I, I said no breaks, 'cause it's about parking.
Got it. No parking breaks, right, all right. Okay, and consensus that only one ADU per lot? All right.
Feels like a good stopping point.
Are we comfortable? Okay, so we are going to come back to you then on September, I believe it's the seventeenth, although you know I never know the exact day, right? But I believe it is on your agenda, I can tell you. September seventeenth. Uh, we will come back with answers to questions about addressing, uh, question ten on the survey, whether these rules were originated in King County and then came to us. And, uh, look at square footage, ADU costs versus multifamily costs. Those were questions that I heard. And then we will pick up these, uh, policy issues and continue and hopefully finish at the next meeting. And then the next step for us will be to begin to develop code. And we're also bringing back information on the height options. And, um, we called it a hardship exemption.
Right. Around the, the owner occupancy.
Right, correct. So, does that fit with your expectations? Great, okay.
Thank you.
You are meeting on the third, but it's the, um, the pros plan, the parks plan? Is the topic.
Well, then we are adjourned. Are we thinking it's gonna be a public hearing on the-